Good morning, County Council.
Good morning, Mr. Ward.
Please join me in a revised version.
Chairman, if we, Madam Clerk, could we now have the roll call, please?
Mr. Pringle.
Present.
Mr. Mackey.
Present.
Madam Barfield.
Present.
Mr. Burley.
Present.
Mr. McQueen.
Present.
Mr. Halliday.
Present.
Ms. Patterson.
Present.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Ms. Clumpus.
Here.
Mr. Greenfield.
Present.
Mr. Body.
Present.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Ms. Fosbrook.
Present.
Mr. Jack.
Mr. McKean.
Present.
Here.
Reckles.
Governor Ford.
And Mr. Bell.
Present.
Thank you, Chairman. Any declaration of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, the adoption of the minutes. Could I have a mover to put the motion on the floor then for the May 11th meeting? Do both of them at once? Okay, so we'll do both sets of minutes, the county council minutes and the committee of the whole minutes will do then as one, moved by Counselor Burley, seconded by Counselor McKean. Further discussion then on both those sets of minutes. Call the vote then, all in favor, that's carried. So we have no reports and no bylaws. It's probably the shortest county council meeting in history when there's no reports. Counselor Echols.
Motion for adjournment.
I think we need a seconder for that one, all in favor, that's carried. We now move then to committee of the whole, we'll call it to order, and a declaration of pecuniary interest with it. Seeing none, we're a couple of minutes early, but I'm assuming the gentlemen that are doing that presentation are available and would look forward then to Mike Ryan and Rod Knott for their presentation on long-term care. Welcome to both of yous.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Good morning, Mr. Ward, councilors, staff, concerned citizens.
Rod, if we may get you to use the mic if you would, please, and that way the, in the other room, they can hear you as well, then, please.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Ward, councilors, staff, and concerned citizens. My name is Rod Knott, and with me is Mike Ryan, President of the Gray County Federation of Agriculture, and we are here to speak for concerned citizens of Gray County, residents of Gray Gables, staff and volunteers of Gray Gables, and several past wardens of Gray County, some present with us here today regarding the potential closure and sale of Gray Gables. Location, location, location. Markdale was chosen for the first county home in 1903 with good reason. It was central to all of Gray County, being the geographic center of the county, and it remains the geographic center today. Two more homes have been added to strategically position them for all the residents of Gray County. If the pending closure goes ahead, there will be no long-term care homes on Highway 10 from Shelburne to Own Sound with the pending closure of Gray Gables and the facility in Chatsworth. Blue Mountains, Eastern Gray Highlands, Meaford, Dundalk, and St. Hampton will have a much longer travel to visit residents, up to an hour each way. Taxes will be used from all municipalities to support all the facilities located in the western half of Gray County. Blue Mountains, Meaford, Gray Highlands, and Southgate pay 54.5 percent of the long-term care levy, and I think deserve a location that they can be used. The September 16th Lynn stated that moving 66 beds from Markdale to Durham would create an oversupply of beds in the Hanover radius. Does that have no weight? The Sienna study states waiting lists were 54 for 66 beds at Gray Gables and 20 for 100 beds at Rockwood Terrace. Regarding the residents of the county, our 2016 Census of Canada now has more people over 65 than under 15 years of age. Blue Mountains area has 18.8 percent seniors as opposed to Canada-wide average of 16.9, and that's right from the census. Residents find it as a volatile time at Gray, the residents of Gray Gables find it as a volatile time with pending decisions and an unknown future. Regarding volunteers, we all know the importance of volunteers in a successful long-term care facility and how the residents respond to their attention. With the impending move of beds to Durham, Markdale volunteers may be reluctant to travel. It is a fair distance for volunteers who are often our seniors as well. Durham volunteers will be diluted, and they will need to increase their base of volunteers. Moving to a larger facility, larger homes will change the social fabric of the facility, the staff, and the residents. People become numbers, not names. Management is less aware of resident needs and staff concerns. Residents are less able to communicate with management due to further layers of administration, and I might add additional cost. Elevators are a concern, especially during emergency situations. 166 residents versus 66 may have a higher frequency of outbreak shutdowns and ensuing more difficulty containing the outbreak, resulting in longer closures. Larger facilities are just not as homelike, as friendly, nor as personal as smaller facilities where residents and visitors and staff intermingle more easily. Less visits negatively impact the residents and the families. Larger facilities tend to warehouse the residents as opposed to more personal care. Warehousing our seniors to gain savings. We can all relate to the amalgamations of the past, and there were little, if any, savings. So this will be another false assumption. Staffing, some Markdale staff may be reluctant to travel to Durham. Staffing challenges will not ease with a larger facility, as was stated previously. Shortages of RPM is widespread throughout the country and will remain a problem. Yes, there will be part-time workers at the homes, they choose to be part-time workers, not full-time. This will not solve the staffing problems. And three different unions and four collective agreements in the county have to be resolved to move to a new facility. What is the cost to do this, and has it been figured into the costing? We have lower-level tenants today, but we may lose them. Loss of the day-away care, day-aware program, daycare, ag services, social services, and Y employment, along with Gray Highlands Municipal Office. If we lose them, it's detriment to the community. We cannot assume, as was stated in one of the studies, that they will continue on. New owners will seek the highest-paying tenants. Whereas the current tenants create a center of activity and add life to the building, seniors continually, or people continually coming and going is of an interest to seniors. We had a taxpayer petition response, which was quite significant. We had 2,628 signatures representing citizens of Gray County and beyond, as well as we had a Save Gray Gables petition, website that accumulated 19,014 signatures to date. And I would ask at this time to be, to present to you the, these, Mr. Ward, they're just accumulated, I present them to you, and you can, they are available for the rest of them.
The present recommendation before council relies heavily on the ability to find a buyer for Gray Gables. Because those 66 beds are not funded by the province to redevelop, the county needs to find some sort of way of funding the new facility and redeveloping those beds. But the fact is that there's existing assisted living facilities across Gray County, many with vacancies. One in the southeast that we called averages between three to seven vacant suites at any given time during the year. In the southwest, by the first of the month, you could find a suite if you were looking for one. The fact is that if we need assisted living facilities, that's a private sector, not the county's role. And as we talk about the costs of long-term care to the county, that's something to think about. New facilities sometimes take two to three years to fill the 90 percent occupancy, and the province prioritizing seniors staying at home further hinders the demographic that's accessing these services. The CRB evaluation of Gray Gables also considered that it was a turnkey operation for assisted living facility. And so any potential buyer will have to renovate the facility to make it into suites, and they suggest that the current facility would only be able to house around 50 suites, which isn't large enough for a private operator to gain any economic efficiencies, and an addition would have to be built. So to find a buyer for such a niche market may take the county time that it can't afford. If you believe the county can't afford three homes, that you, it's all about dollars and cents, really the cheapest option that Sierra came forward with was an addition onto the existing building at Gray Gables. The building was designed with an addition in mind, and as such, the site prep work of a new facility, the acquisition and services to a new facility in Durham, it's about 100,000 per year over 25 years, that it's cheaper to put an addition on Gray Gables than it is to build a brand-new combined facility in Durham. That's also assuming that you can build a brand-new building for the same cost as an addition, but we all know that addition would be far cheaper in most cases than entirely new build when you consider bringing services to the site. More realistically, if you figure out a cost spread, and you don't get $12 million for Gray Gables, if you look at the Sierra's report on the cost of redeveloping the 100 beds in Rockwood and leaving Gray Gables alone, it's actually cheaper in the long term than building a combined facility in Durham, according to their numbers. And I think that as an independent consultant that's come out, it's valid to look at their numbers, and staff have identified the addition as the strongest option, but I don't think there is a mood in the county to move to two homes. I think that the three strategically-located homes across the county serve this county well and should continue, especially when you consider that there's no cost savings according to Sierra report for that change. It's unrealistic to believe that you can build a new facility for the same cost per bed as an addition, and if it's all about dollars and cents, the combined facility in Durham is not the strongest option. And if the estimated sale value of Gray Gables is not realized, it's the most expensive option. If you look at their cost, on the left, you see what you get for Gray Gables. Along the top, the cost per bed for development. There's only two scenarios where the costs of long-term care in the county go down. Long-term care is going to cost this county more over the next 25 years, no matter whether you combine the facilities or you leave two separately. We can't fight that. But the Sierra report would strongly suggest that it's actually more expensive to build a combined facility in Durham without those extra provincial funds to redevelop Gray Gables. The other thing would be that the county's role should be strengthening the communities that make it up. Markdale would be left as the only town in the county that has a hospital and no long-term care facility. New doctors are paid on a fee-for-service model. The new hospital will not have elective day surgeries, and everything that a new physician would need to be recruited and retained in Markdale is diminished by the fact that there, those options aren't there for sources of income. The other problem would be, does it make sense to move all the long-term care beds to the west side of the county? As we saw in Shelburne and now in Dundalk, and move forward, the next potential development site up the Highway 10 corridor is Markdale with the services. And the location of the home needs to take that into account, along with the fact that census data doesn't take into account the many weekend homes that will turn into retirement homes as the years progress. The other thing would be that the town of the Blue Mountains in the eastern part of Gray Highlands is in the North Simcoe-Muskoka Lynn, and we talk about the southwest Lynn and moving the home to Durham will create an oversupply. As a province moves forward to look for funding and where it should put funding in long-term care beds, the North Simcoe-Muskoka Lynn has one of the lowest rates of availability of any Lynn in the province for long-term care beds outside of the GTA. So if the county is going to seek funding from the province going forward, it'd make sense to have a home that services one of the lowest availability of long-term care beds Lynn versus one of the highest in the province. The other thing would be that when the hospital was approved in Markdale, the Ministry of Health talked about the location of the long-term care home, the community health clinic, and the hospital as a model of health care for rural Ontario. The current recommendation undermines this model. It moves an oversupply of beds to the western half of the county. It disenfranchises the eastern municipalities traveling farther to access care, to visit relatives and loved ones, and it really is the most expensive option according to the Sierra report. And so we would urge council to reject the recommendation and to ensure the quality of care for seniors in three strategically-placed homes across the county.
Just to, just to finish up, Mr. Ward and councilors, the decision to close Gray Gables will not be good for the future of long-term care in, or Gray County, and will have a detrimental effect for years. We ask you to reconsider this proposed action. The residents have spoken and implore you to consider the status quo, providing long-term care for all of Gray County, not heavily weighted in one area of the county. Mr. Ward, you speak of winners and losers. Make us all winners by choosing the status quo. The proposal implemented will drive that wedge down the center of Gray County that will never heal in our lifetime. This closure could be a legacy of Gray County Council 2017 that would spoil your record of good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, gentlemen. Does council have any questions for either of the presenters? Okay, so our next delegation is Stephen Townsend.
Good morning, Mr. Ward and councilors and guests. My name is Stephen Townsend, I'm here to speak for the Save Rockwood Committee, as well as the residents and workers of Rockwood, and the town of Durham and the municipality of West Gray. Some of this you will have seen before, I'm not sure you will have seen at all as succinctly placed. It's been a year since we got together as a group and started gathering our data, and the biggest thing that we said was that the Sienna report looked at construction only, it didn't look at the rest of the information, and therefore we decided we were going to help you get to where you needed to be. So the intent here is to, oops, it's not moving forward. Okay, so the intent here is to try to put everything together for you in one document and a relatively short presentation. We used our own information, as well as information from the county reports, as well as what we've heard over the last year. In 2010, the province made changes to the long-term care, so what you see is the residency qualifications were actually changed. Instead of being first come, first selected, it became chronic care. That was really the criteria that they started to use. I believe that was probably to cut down costs to the province, however, what it did was it limited what we have available for people in long-term care situations. The impact from that was focus on more support for health care and health care support because they were chronic. Second, it increased the, excuse me, the requirement for the support and services in the sense of doctors, hospital, the clinic, et cetera, and that's what we have seen happen and delivered within the Durham area. Health care service needs are important, they're critical to the well-being of those people, and they require more significant local health care support and services. Durham has six doctors, we have capacity for seven, the posting is on for the seventh. Selection criteria has been put together over the last six months, and so we expect to get that very soon. We have 24/7, we have a connected clinic, meaning the doctors can get there very quickly. If we happen to bring a locum in, the locum is five minutes away in apartment supplied by the foundation, so it's well-serviced, well-positioned, and well-thought-out as a service facility. There are numerous parcels of land in Durham that will accommodate the rebuild of Rockwood, and one of them has a very, very close proximity to the hospital, which would actually enhance and improve the service that those doctors can provide. You do have a letter in your package that has been distributed from the doctors within the Durham clinic, and they state very emphatically that with the six doctors they have, it's a challenge at times to meet the service needs. So having the right number of doctors with the right facility at the right time is, again, critical for chronic people. If you look at the bed availability, the bed availability that is there is, there's none in the southwest area based on the fact that the word that the project team came out with is that a lot of the private homes are moving to the northeast up to Own Sound area. Those plans can change, we acknowledge that, but based on what you were able to find out, that's the situation. In addition, the Lynn has indicated from their studies, and I think Kim and Lynn both commented, that the Linds see a gap if, in fact, the beds leave Durham, and it's from the Chesley, Hanover, and Durham region. They would not have enough to service what's required and meet the needs of the Lynn per their qualification requirements. As for financial, you will note, sorry, you will note, I've shown the chart that was in the last report that was presented to county council. You can see that Durham is well-positioned from a cost-per-bed perspective to move forward. If, in fact, you were to rebuild, which means reposition the beds, build your 32 pod units, three to four units per, pod units in the, in the home, I would expect that 12,000 to reduce. It may even challenge what Lee Manor has for a cost. I think it's an excellent, excellently-run facility, gives you good cost per bed. As far as the, excuse me, as far as moving, talking about the economic impact, if it was to move with the loss of jobs that Durham has already experienced with the downsizing of Durham Furniture, Interforest, and others that are continuing to leave like Thoroughweb, now what happens is there's no job replacement strategy by the county if, in fact, you move those out. That would be devastating. I don't think anyone can deny that you cannot continue to keep taking jobs out and not expect some impact. So I think you will see a huge one going forward. As far as, I guess that doesn't show correctly. See if I can move that down for you. Sorry. So the last statement is there's no repurposing of Rockwood Terrace, it would be deemed to not go forward as a, as a unit. You also have a copy of Dr. Wally's letter, and I just wanted to make sure that if you haven't, you get a chance to see it, and please read it very carefully because it is, it's very critical to, you know, what's happening and the care that they need. As far as what goes on and what will go on in the, in the future process here, a year ago, we got involved, as we said, because basing it on construction costs only as far as the decision goes, did not make sense to the residents of Durham. We asked you to do a full project review, in fact, we even gave you lists of steps you should take and an outline of a project management process. I think you've done very well to do that, and we thank you for that because that was very important to us. When you do something like that, you can't always guarantee the, the outcome, and we had no idea whether you would say keep Durham, whether you'd say keep Markdale, whether you'd say put it together in one location or the other, but it's the process that's important. And if you do the process correctly and you look at all the right things, you'll come up with the right answer. The decision on the size of the, of the actual facility is obviously up to Gray County, whether you do one or two. All we ask is you do not take any beds from Durham. The other thing we say is that this has gone on for a year, there's report after report after report that keeps coming forward. We think that there are risks to not making a decision that I'm not sure everyone has considered. You have a provincial municipal election next year, that means the players could change. That means the funding can change. That means you've got to restart the process because the players at the table don't get it, they don't understand. No offense to the people sitting in the room, I'm sure you're very qualified, I'm sure you're very good. If people decide not to run, if people do run and don't get in, that's where you start again. Those risks have to be assessed, and we believe that you have a lot of information before you that hopefully will allow you to come to the right decision. So I thank you very much for the time, and I wish you good luck in making that decision because I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, quite frankly, but anyway, thank you again.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Townsend regarding his presentation? Okay, seeing none, then we move then the next delegation, Akash, would he be available?
Your worship, do all councilors have a copy of the, of the report?
Akash, can we get you to speak a little closer into the mic if you would, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I have to bend down, I'm getting old, my back hurts now. All right. Good morning, your worship and councilors. I appeared before you today with a troubled and concerned mind. You're voting on a recommendation put forward by staff in report LTCR CW 05-17 to obtain services of a management company to provide input into the planning and development of a new amalgamated long-term care facility in Durham, as well as to administer the day-to-day operations of the current homes and the new home once it is operational. And you are also being asked to support the sale of a public asset, Gray Gables. These recommendations have been made, keeping in mind the guiding principles dictated in the corporate strategic plan, and I disagree with these recommendations made in these, in this report on the basis that they are in contravention of the same strategic plan. One, they promote poor fiscal strategy, they promote austerity over fiscal responsibility, and they place higher importance on poor future planning rather than creative solutions for service provision. In 2016, Gray County requisitioned Sienna Amaco. In their report, they made, they provided three options, the first one being moving all beds to Gray Gables, which showed a reduction in the levy of just under 13 percent. They provided two scenarios each for moving all the beds to Rockwood Terrace and building a new Rockwood Terrace while keeping status quo. In the best-case scenario, if you moved all the beds to Rockwood Terrace, you'd save less than 9 percent on the levy, but realistically speaking, they showed an increase by over 30 percent on the levy. Building a new Rockwood Terrace and maintaining status quo of the beds, on the best case, you'd see an increase of 12 percent, but realistically, you'd see an increase of 28 percent. Further, Rockwood Terrace is eligible and has You're voting on a recommendation put forward by staff in report LTCR CW-05-17, to obtain services of a management company to provide input into the planning and development of a new amalgamated long-term care facility in Durham, as well as to administer the day-to-day operations of the current homes and the new home once it is operational, and you are also being asked to support the sale of a public asset, Gray Gables. These recommendations have been made, keeping in mind the guiding principles dictated in the corporate strategic plan, and I disagree with these recommendations made in these, in this report, on the basis that they are in contravention of the same strategic plan. One, they promote poor fiscal strategy, they promote austerity over fiscal responsibility, and they place higher importance on poor future planning rather than creative solutions for service provision. In 2016, Gray County requisitioned Sienna Amaco, in their report, they made, they provided three options, the first one being moving all beds to Gray Gables, which showed a reduction in the levy of, just under 13%. They provided two scenarios each for moving all the beds to Rockwood Terrace and building a new Rockwood Terrace while keeping status quo. In the best-case scenario, if you moved all the beds to Rockwood Terrace, you'd save less than 9% on the levy, but realistically speaking, they showed an increase by over 30% on the levy. Building a new Rockwood Terrace and maintaining status quo of the beds, on the best case, you'd see an increase of 12%, but realistically, you'd see an increase of 28%. Further, Rockwood Terrace is eligible and has been approved for a redevelopment grant. This is a grant which would not be available for redeveloping the 66 beds at Gray Gables. This means you would be gambling on getting the fair market value for Gray Gables. Add to this the outstanding amount on the roof that was recently completed, and you're looking at the building punching above its weight to be sold over its fair market value. Given that improved quality of life is one of the tenets of, of your strategic plan, a case is much stronger for Rockwood Terrace to be redeveloped for 100 beds, more so because this option doesn't require you to engage in Russian roulette with a public asset. Further gambling comes into the picture in moving around any of the beds due to the lack of a guarantee that these beds will in fact, come back to Gray County. So, given these numbers, it is laughable to claim that, that by supporting the movement of the 66 beds from Gray Gables to Rockwood Terrace would lead to an improved prosperity and quality of life. Austerity over fiscal responsibility. Another name for closure of services is austerity. I'll provide a great example of fiscal responsibility from within this organization. I forgot to change the slide, sorry. Oh, further. I'm bad at multitasking. All right, so, I'll provide a great example of fiscal responsibility from within this organization. The fact that the debenture payments for the Lee Manor redevelopment have continued to fund reserves after the maturing of the debentures is a perfect show of fiscal responsibility. This is the vein of decision-making that this council should follow. Another example is one I take from your strategic plan, to continue to plan for impacts of provincial downloading on all services. This is the foresight that is absent from this recommendation. Further, the three LTC homes run by the county are set to receive a sum of $6.2 million from the levy. This means that all residents of Gray County are paying into these three facilities. As such, to say to someone from the town of Blue Mountains that they can use homes in Collingwood or private homes in Miford due to the distance to Durham is effectively denying them a service they have been paying for. Austerity didn't work in 1930, it didn't work in 2008, and it certainly won't magically start working in 2017. Services like assisted living and memory care facilities can always be built by private service providers. As the county, we can take steps to facilitate such activity from the private sector without having to gamble on public assets. You speak of participatory decision-making in your 2014-2016 strategic plan. This council needs to maintain the status quo as is being widely asked for the public. Even if you disagree with maintaining status quo, there is a price to be paid for delaying the decision on Rockwood any longer. It is imperative that you direct staff to take appropriate measures to ensure that the 100 beds at Rockwood remain within the county system at a new location in Durham. Poor future planning over creative solutions for a way forward. The current recommendation is not at all rural-friendly, and it can be argued that it fails to meet the current and near-future needs of the people who live in our communities. The southwest LYN is foreseeing that LTCH redevelopment process will result in fewer homes with more beds per site. This process will present a risk in rural areas, people may need to travel further to access an LTCH. With the LYN focused on equitable access to LTCH, the recommendation presented is regressive. Going through with the presented recommendation will create an oversupply of beds in the Hanover radius. Redeveloping Rockwood's 100 beds in Durham is the only solution that will maintain an adequate supply of beds within that radius and surrounding areas. If Gray County were to really follow their strategic plan, you would be, one, playing an active role in mitigating any risks to rural areas through the redevelopment of LTC homes, and, two, heavily focused like the southwest LYN on equitable access. Further, the current waiting list for an LTC bed is 26,500 names long. In six years, this is expected to double to 50,000. It is foolish to think that the beds are never coming. The current system is bursting at the seams, and it is a matter of time before things hit the fan or additional beds are made available. With the current boom in the GTA housing market and urban housing markets in general, the number of people migrating north of the Fortin will see multiple years of increases. We saw it with Shelburne at the past year, we will see it in Dundalk in the next two years, and with Markdale over the next three to five years. This growth will address a major issue identified in the subject report. As per the report, 69 full-time and 13 part-time staff will be eligible for retirement over the next six years, including several key leadership positions. First, I question, what is happening with the, with the development of the succession plan for the LTC department? It is, after all, a strategic initiative outlined in the 2017-2019 strategic plan. Secondly, being eligible for retirement and retiring are two separate things altogether. Writing for the Globe and Mail, Sean McCarthy says, "A vast majority of Canadians have totally inadequate savings to make a case for Canadians who are working past the age of retirement." Another strength that has been identified in a Globe and Mail series is the Immigration Program of Canada, which says about 250,000 new immigrants arrive in Canada each year, which is roughly double our country's natural growth through births and deaths. There is also figures related to the number of people working over the age of 65, which is reassuring that just because you are eligible for retirement, doesn't mean you will be Further, sorry. Oh, thank you, thank you. Should have left to the first slide. LTCR CW-05-17 further states that recruitment of frontline staff is challenging, and I thank the powers that be that not everyone in Gray County gives up because something is challenging. If Agnes McPhail and Nellie McClung had given up some hundred years ago, maybe councilors' right, RDL Patterson, Clumpus, and Fosbrook might not have been here at this table today, but I digress. I would like to draw attention to the strategic initiatives from the latest strategic plan, to promote a workplace culture that encourages innovation, efficiency, and effectiveness in fiscal management and service delivery. I urge you to direct staff to explore innovative solutions to staffing issues. Every industry around is going to be experiencing gaps in labor force. There's a saying, "Death is a permanent solution to a temporary problem." Similarly, closure of Gray Gables is a permanent solution to a temporary problem. I urge you to take steps to attract migration of younger families to the area. In closing, I submit that the recommendations contained within LTCR CW-05-17 decontravene the primary guiding principles that they are to uphold. Having said that, I ask that this council stand firm in, in maintaining status quo in the LTC home structure. Further, that this council should look into other avenues to attract private investors to invest in the assisted living and memory care markets. Also, I urge to, I urge this council to take firm steps in attracting younger families to come live in Gray. As I walk away from this podium, I ask that you keep in mind all the people who have made multiple trips to this council chambers here, to the public input session, and to the countless rallies, and then vote for the right option, the option to maintain status quo.
And, questions?
Okay, thanks, Akash. Any questions from County Council to Akash regarding his presentation? Okay, seeing none, thank you, sir. Okay, so, we move on with our agenda, that's the three delegations that we had listed for this morning, or actually, there's another one for 11:30. So, any determination of items requiring separate discussion from the consent agenda? Is there anything that anyone wants pulled from that grouping that's before you? Councillor Pringle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ward, and I would like to pull number E, the CAO report in regards to the, as well as the, which is the EMS DMO.
It's already a separate? Okay, so, just, Councillor Pringle is asking to pull number E.
So, we may need to go in camera.
Okay, the CAO is advising, we may need to go in camera then, regarding that? Okay, any other items from other councilors that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing nothing, we have a motion to put on the floor, do I have a mover then for the consent agenda? Moved by Councillor Eccles, second by Councillor Clumpus, that the following consent items then be received, and the report then before you. Any further discussion then on that motion? Call the vote then, all in favor? That's carried. So, now, we move down to items for discussion and direction. The first one is Long-Term Care Report, O9-17, regarding long-term care. This is brought by Kevin Wuppler and Lyn Johnson. Do I have a mover to put this on the floor, please? Moved by Councillor Ardell, second by Councillor Bell. So, the podium is, is yours for both of you, just would ask, same as the other presenters, that you speak very close to the mic if you could, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ward and County Council. I don't seem to have a presentation. Good morning, everyone. This is just a final follow-up report to my, or just a verbal of my report that was circulated in the agenda package. I've included in here a slide that I can get continued questions about, and that is the supply and demands of beds in long-term care. The target of the LYN and the ministry is to have 80 to 110 beds per thousand people 75 years and older. That's what they set as a benchmark, and we do know, they've said that 10% of the people in that age bracket will require long-term care. The current supply of beds in the southwest LYN is considerably higher than what is available elsewhere in the province. The ministry and LYN, and we've met with both of those, have said there are no plans for new beds. When you look at this chart, you will see, and I've put a red arrow beside, three figures, Mississauga Halton, Toronto Central, and Central LYN. All three of those LYNs have less than 60 beds per thousand people 75 years and older. If there's an election, if there's also influx of cash to long-term care, it's pretty certain that new beds would not be coming into Gray County or the southwest LYN. They are going to service the areas that are the most underserved first. It's also important to note that 60% of the beds in Gray County are private long-term care beds, 40% are municipal, compared to the province with 21% of the municipalities providing access to long-term care. So, the majority of people living within Gray County are living in a private home. There's no difference between a private home or a municipal home, we have the same standards of care that we have to meet, and we have the same expectations for compliance. They follow the rules, it's a consistent approach across all long-term, all long-term So, on to our scenarios. In the report, we identified some scenarios. Sienna report provided a starting point for us, they provided a financial assessment, feasibility review, and a cost-benefit analysis for some of the options, and that was really a starting point, and that's where we were a year ago. Since that time, staff have met with the ministry, we've met with the LYN, we've met with private developers to try and understand what options we have, and what are plans for long-term care to serve all of Gray County. We also reviewed the projected growth of people 75 years and older, and we looked at numbers, because the numbers, you can have a large percentage, but if you have a small base number, it still doesn't represent high numbers. We really focused not only on what the status is today, but what does it look like in the future, because we know there are changes ahead in this aging population. So, the things that we looked at was 166 beds redeveloped on a new site, and 100 beds redeveloped on a new site. We did not complete additional analysis on moving 100 beds to Markdale, and that was for some specific reasons. Sienna had completed that. And when we looked at the report further, Gray Gables has 22-bed home areas, which is not the optimal 32-bed home areas that is in the design standards today to provide the best access of care and the best way to be able to provide care to the aging population. It also helps support a more efficiency, a more efficiency in the delivery of care. The other rationale for not moving 100 beds from Markdale, from Durham to Markdale, is that West Gray is projected to have a very large growth in the number of people 75 years of age and older, and they're a more central location to serve Hanover and Markdale, which are both populated areas. They also serve currently a lot of other areas, whether that be Chatsworth, whether it's Holstein, Varney, we have people in the homes from Flusherton, people travel to get into the home they want to be in, or sometimes, there's no bed in the area they want to be in, and they go with a temporary move and end up staying longer because it does become their home. So, financial assumptions, we used very conservative values, and I can't reinforce that enough, when we were developing the projected final, financial picture here. We chose $230,000 per bed for redevelopment, that is the high end. We want to be conservative here and provide the best figures that we can. We used reserve funding and sale proceeds of $9.3 million. We do know that the province will annually provide $635,100 for 25 years, and the interest rate we selected was 3.5%. And when that was chosen, the current rate, and it is today, 3.23% that we can receive money, or we can borrow money at. So, again, it's conservative. We did not include any rental revenue from external parties, because we don't know what a new building looks like and what the decision will be as far as tenant space. Additionally, we looked at the operational savings that Sienna had in their report last year, and we updated it to reflect the 2017 budget. We are going to propose, whoops, propose building the home with 60% preferred accommodation and budget at achieving 80% of that 60%. So, that is very confusing, I understand that, and the little pie part, diagram in there shows the gray to the right and the piece that pulled out, that's what we would budget at 80% accommodation as preferred, but we would actually only budget that we're going to achieve 80%, or 6, 80% of that amount. And you might wonder why that is. There are expectations, higher expectations now for people coming into long-term care. There's more need for people to have a private room, whether it be for responsive behaviors, whether it be for some advanced medical conditions, that type of thing, and people want that private room with a private washroom, that would be the first choice, and we know that that's the wave of the future. So, we might as well build so that we're able to meet that as we move ahead. In the homes currently now, we budget for 80% of our preferred accommodation rooms being full, we did that last year in our budget, and we're ranging from 87% to 92% occupancy in those rooms, so there is no problem filling preferred accommodation. I'll turn this over to Kevin.
So, the, the operating cost, cost comparison that we've used is 166 beds on the new site. The reduced operating costs, those are based on reduction in administrative wages and benefit savings with the combined home, as well as the nursing envelope with savings, and the private premium revenues that Lyn had talked about that we could maximize. In comparison, 100 beds on a new site, those reduced operating costs, I mean, kind of $173,000, as you'd be maintaining the three homes, so you would lose the administrative wages and the nursing envelope, and somewhat the private premium premiums again as well, because the design of Gray Gables currently does not have 60% private rooms, so we do not have the ability to charge out those rooms at this, at this time. What I did here is, in, in the report, I showed year one of what those two looked like, 166 beds on a new site and 100 beds on a new site, and I've showing a levy reduction of just over $1 million and just under $1 million in year one. That is based on councils in the past deciding to put that Rockwood, put away the Lee Manor debenture funding for redevelopment. So, in your current today budget, you almost have $1.4 million sitting for redevelopment. And I'll, I'll show you how that kind of works here. In year one and 166 beds, you're going to get received $635,000 in construction subsidy. That's an annual amount that's based on a per dam per bed that the ministry flows to us annually. We don't get it all upfront at once, it becomes, it'd be paid over the 25 years. The net operating income are those, those savings and the, and the additional revenues, the private revenues that we said we get, we'd save, so $631 for the, that's 166 versus $173 in year one of the 100 bed. in year one of the hundred bed. Your principal and interest payments, the one-hundred-and-sixty-six beds is a considerable larger build than the hundred beds, so you're borrowing, and you're, so that's your principal and interest payment. Over twenty-five years, it'd be almost one-point-eight million on one-hundred-and-sixty-six beds versus one-point-two million on a one-hundred-bed facility. So if you take that line there and you adjust it incrementally, you'd have an impact to the levy at that point of four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand on the one-hundred-and-sixty-six bed, and a hundred beds would be four-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand. But you currently have in your two-thousand-and-seventeen budget a transfer of reserve of one-point-three million dollars that is available there that you could be reduced to fund this. And as well, the other item I've added here is combining three to two homes, there's capital savings on those homes. Right now, you're maintaining, trying to maintain three buildings in your capital budgets. This will reduce that down to two. So the estimated net levy impact you can see is, in year one of one-hundred-and-sixty-six beds, we'd be able to reduce the budget a million dollars and almost a million dollars on the hundred bed. But year twenty-six is when things kind of change, is when the construction subsidy falls off from the ministry, as well as that principal and interest payment falls off. And the difference between that interest payment of one-point-seven and one-point-two is considerable money. And that's why that all of a sudden in year twenty-six, the one-hundred-and-sixty-six bed has a better reduction to the levy than a hundred-bed facility.
So there's some consolidation considerations, and it's, right from the beginning, we've said, it's not just about the money. It's about doing what we need to do to deliver quality care into the future. So amalgamation will improve the ability to create full-time and stable part-time positions. It will increase the availability of a larger core group of staff in specialized services. Behavioral Sports Ontario, I've talked to council about that in the past, and that's additional funding we receive for specific dedicated staff to provide that care. A larger home has more hours. Dietitian, social worker, physiotherapist, in a larger home, because they're in the home more frequently, they're better able to flex their time and deal with emerging trends and issues and challenges versus waiting until next Wednesday when that specialty service is in the home. So we do, would have an increased ability to be more responsive in the care we provide. It would reduce the duplication of services in the homes and in the county administration. Staff training, report submissions, annual program reviews are all mandatory items, and right now, we're carrying that across the organization three times. Laundry, services, dietary, maintenance, and administration are also areas that stand out as having quite a bit of duplication of service. From a corporate perspective, we, you know, we look at some of the things finance does within that department, processing reports and submitting things three times, IT and human resources. So long-term care isn't just insular in the three homes, it is well-immersed in the corporate With amalgamation, we will have a home that meets the most current building design standards and reflects a design that supports the best practices in long-term care. These are the two-thousand-and-fifteen long-term care design standards. We would have a new thirty-year license, improved operational efficiency through a well-designed physical environment. And again, the twenty-two-bed home areas are not optimal. We would be working towards the design standards of thirty-two-bed home areas. Improved accessibility to staff, and we hear that in surveys and feedback that we get, staff finding staff, residents finding staff, and families finding staff when they need to find them. It's really important in the type of environment that we work in today for safety, for security, and just for a customer service aspect, you've got to be able to find somebody when you need to speak to them. There's an increased availability of, this would provide an increased availability of beds in an area where there's a high projected growth of seniors, seventy-five and plus, and it provides an opportunity to enhance housing options for seniors in South Gray with the repurposing of Gray Gables. There's a chance for redevelopment and in addition to Gray Gables, if that's what they choose, and that offers further economic redevelopment opportunities within Markdale. So back to report CW zero-five-seventeen. It had three parts to the recommendation. One was a request for a proposal for a management company. There's two parts to that. One is to provide input and planning into the redevelopment of a new amalgamated long-term care facility. Second part, provide support and advisory services related to daily operations of the current home and the new home, once it's operational. Excuse me. Develop a project plan, because this is three to five years out. We have to start planning now and develop, or provide to council a draft terms of reference for an RFP project committee. And that was my report.
Council have any questions for Lynn or Kevin regarding the report that they have just presented? Councillor Pringle?
Yes, thank you. Back to the report, Lynn and Kevin. I guess, curious, and maybe I missed it in there, but if things were to stay status quo, would there be additional staffing required? And I don't know whether that was in there, and what would that impact financially be?
Okay. I definitely know there's a need to support resident care in the homes. Acuity is getting higher, and I do know Gray Gables specifically, we hear from staff, we've heard from them, and we've heard from the managers that they need more hands on the floor. So we're looking at what is that cost? I don't have a figure on that today. You look at, with the changes in acuity for the residents, and that kind of links to the management contract, where we go there. Because there is a definite need for a clinical support person for the homes in order to drive that, and if we wanted to improve things as far as staff education, we would be looking for a position there as well. So I have not done final figures on that, but definitely with status quo, there has to be changes.
Councillor Pringle?
But the need and the cost would increase?
Yes.
Councillor McQueen? Probably better if you stay seated so you can keep closer to your mic.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council, and Lynn, and Kevin for your presentation. I have a few questions. I guess the first question is, with the private sector with regards to long-term care beds or even assisted living, there's no guarantee of where they are. We have no control as County Council where they are positioned. That's a private sector thing, right?
That is correct.
So would you agree that with the county having three long-term care beds, we have at current, we have three locations which maintain a certain geographical location within the county?
I'm not really sure. I think I'm sure of what you're asking me. What we heard from the Linn last July is that private developers are consolidating beds to be able to provide a more efficient building design so that they can meet the needs of residents. That is very similar to what this proposal is.
So sort of like a campus? No, I guess what I mean by a campus is, if, what I'm gathering, what I'm hearing is there are the private sector are buying up long-term care beds, and we see it on the west side of county, and relocating those beds, but also I'm hearing with the long-term care beds that they are buying, they are developing a campus to enhance the assisted living.
In some cases, private developers like the campus, that's what their business model is, so if that's their choice, that's...
Right. So I guess it goes back to the part is, is currently right now, we as the county of Gray, having three locations have the ability to keep those where they are, because we control that location from our ability to have all those beds that are in place.
If Gray County chooses to fund three homes and maintain status quo, that is a choice of Gray County?
That's right.
I can't...
So no different than us having four work yards for our road maintenance and servicing? We've made that decision to have that throughout the county, and that's just a statement. I guess my question is to you, Lynn, is when was the last time you spoke with the ministry about the possibility of getting more long-term care beds?
I believe that was in March.
Okay, and do you know the person you talked to?
I can get you his name. He was the Associate Deputy Minister of Health and staff from the redevelopment branch. There is about five ministry officials there with, that represent things from bed allotments to redevelopment to compliance.
So that was a meeting that was organized? Set down, okay.
And the Linn was present at that meeting as well.
As well as representatives from the Linn?
Yes.
Were also at that meeting.
Do we have any minutes or any notes from that meeting?
Kim? Can I, if I just could add one thing? I think it's important for everybody to recognize that there is like a level playing field here with regard to the disposition and placement of beds, that the private sector, although yes, we are seeing consolidation within the private industry, they are still held to that same process, similar to what we would need to be, that if they are wanting to move beds around, they still need approval to do that, similar to what we do, is my understanding, right? That that requirement of the Linn or the Linn's desire to see an eighty-to-one-hundred-and-ten-bed service threshold across the area is something that they're working with the private sector the same as they are with ourselves.
Certainly, they're all licensed and they have to follow part of protocol, but my question goes back, is there any record of that meeting or any minutes from that meeting that was held with the minister?
A brief was presented to the minister, and the meeting was held, I don't know how to describe that, you were at a meeting.
That's right. This meeting was, the purpose of the meeting was to discuss with the representatives of the province and with the Linn what our opportunities were as far as whether or not we had the ability to have further discussions with the private sector, whether there was any alternative interpretation of the legislation as we understood it with regard to our requirements and the constraints that we held. That's the information that went into subsequent reports. Certainly, I think what, when we talked through the Social Services Committee and on to council last summer and fall, I think we clearly signaled our intent to have that conversation with the Linn and with the province, when we indicated we wanted to talk to the private sector and see what their interests and abilities were. So that's, that information kind of underpins the reports that council has seen since.
I guess I'm circling around to the part of the ability to get more long-term care beds for Gray County, and I guess is this March of two thousand and sixteen or March of two thousand and seventeen?
Seventeen.
Okay. So going to a question to you, Kevin, with regards to your funding model with the six-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand. I understand that the subsidy range is anywhere from sixteen to twenty-two dollars per day per bed over twenty-five years. What is a dollar amount per day that we're working off of?
Seventeen dollars and forty cents, I believe. It's the, it's the basic, plus there was a medium home amount that they provided, ninety-six beds to one-hundred-and-thirty, I think it was. There was a bonus for that, so it was in the Sienna numbers, I'm using the exact same per day.
Okay. So have you investigated any further of that range to get a higher subsidy per day per bed?
At the time, my recollection with Sienna was the cost to build sort of a lead building for energy and things like that, that the payback on that wasn't what they would consider appropriate, and they recommended using the value that they had given us in the report of the basic, plus the benefit they gave for a medium-sized home, so...
Okay, so you're saying it was based on seventeen dollars and change?
Yeah, I want to say seventeen dollars and forty cents.
Okay. The other question is, when you had that meeting with the minister and staff and Lynn and with regards to basically the ministry, was there any mentioning about putting an application in for redevelopment and/or long-term care beds?
That was not the purpose of the meeting. I think it was in two thousand and fifteen that the ministry put out a request for people with redevelopment where they wanted us to tell them what our plans were. It was submitted and recorded, reported to social services that it went in to say that we have a hundred beds in Durham that need to be redeveloped, and as far as our plans went at that time, we don't know what they are. But we did give ministry intent in two thousand and fifteen that we were interested as Gray County in developing those beds. You cannot move forward with an application until you have certain processes done.
Okay. Well, I've had some discussion with ministry staff, just as of yesterday. My deputy mayor is my witness to the conference call. I spoke to Minister Hoskins last week. As I recall, I want to refresh council here, that our last meeting, I was at a community hub summit in Toronto, and I happened to have an opportunity to sit down in a session with Eric Hoskins, and he said, and I will quote, he said, "If you have issues that you need to be addressed, come to me." So I did. Last week, I was at an AMO MOU meeting with regards to my role as an executive of the AMO, and after our session with Minister Hoskins, I had an opportunity to have a discussion in the hall with Mr. Hoskins. He certainly gave me, he says that I will have my policy advisor get back to you, his name is Ian Testney, and he did. So I had a call, I had a conversation with him Friday morning and a subsequent call yesterday, or yesterday afternoon. A few things that were mentioned, and I guess this is a question before I move on, a question to you, Lynn. During that meeting in March, was there any discussion about us losing our beds?
Can you clarify what your question is?
Well, there's been discussion around this table with regards to the fear-mongering, I would call it, with regards to us, the possibility of losing our beds that could be jeopardized, it could be jeopardized with regards to LEAN or, was there any discussion about us losing those beds?
We did not talk to the ministry about losing beds. We talked to them about more beds, the availability of more beds, the ability to work with private operators, to amalgamate share beds, to help private operators and ourselves to come to core numbers that we need. We did not discuss losing beds. It is outlined in the act, legislation, what the process is if Gray County chooses not to develop, or what the process is if the ministry decides they're going to remove beds. So it's in the act.
We went all the way to Toronto and we never asked that question?
Let me clarify, we were at the OJRA conference and the meeting was set up while we were there.
We never actually, we're directly at the minister's office then.
We were at the ministry office, correct?
Well, that's interesting, that question, because I asked a question about the possibility of us losing beds, and he says, and I'll quote, "Municipalities do not lose beds." And he was very adamant about that. I said that while the Rockwood Terrace is for redevelopment, has to be done by two thousand and twenty-five, and he said, yes, by five years out, you need to come up with a plan, but he says, "We're not going to come in and sweep your beds away." He also said that certainly by two thousand and twenty, we'd be sending a letter saying, "What are you doing?" So that comes right from the policy advisor of Minister of Health, who Eric Hoskins said, "You communicate with this fellow." The second part I want to talk about from my discussion with him was the part about funding, and I guess the part about, he said to me yesterday, he says, "Right now, there are no new long-term beds available." We all know that. But he said, and as you pointed out in your slide, there are a few slides back, that there is huge pressure coming, I think in the presentation by Mr. Naught, it was showed, and that said that, you know, that, you know, there's more people that are over the age of sixty-five than there are under fifteen years of age. And we had a long conversation yesterday about that, and the ministry knows that they are in short need of long-term care beds. He told me that we need to put an application in to the ministry with regards to our plan with Rockwood Terrace, along with the request for more long-term care beds. So I would suggest we need to do that. Get an application in, and get it in writing that say, "No, we do not get any more long-term care beds." But he said, "Put it in an application," which is not that hard to do, he said, and he said, "You put that application in, and then it's there." And they are seeing tremendous pressure that they need to increase long-term care beds in the province of Ontario. And so I think it's very important that... And so I think it's very important that, you know, this whole discussion that we're doing and, you know, there, certainly there is an election coming. What better time to get that application in? What better time to get an announcement for Gray County for more long-term care beds? We talked about Gray Gables. The ministry is very, quite, quite acknowledged on what's going on with Gray Gables and Rockwood Terrace. He, soon as I mentioned it to the, to Minister of Health, he said, "Yeah." He was quite aware of that. And, and they follow things and the ministry follows things very closely, mind you. So from that, he also, and I also had a conversation with regards to, about the critical mass and what is the right size. His point was the right size for Gray Gables or any long-term care bed is 96. 96 is the number that gives you that base to be more, most cost-effective. And so for Gray Gables, an extra 30 beds brings you to 96. I mean, it's not a big ask. And I would suggest we make this application, as he suggested, Ian did, and not only maybe request more long-term care beds for Markdale, but also with the rebuild of Rockwood Terrace. If you don't ask, you don't get. And that's, you know, the part of, of putting it in an application, which he suggested. Also, he said that long-term care beds as far as the private sector used to be going anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 per bed. Now they're going as high as $80,000. There's a huge vacuum happening in the long-term care business. And the ministry knows that, you know, there is a lot of things going on. And, and the thing is, is it's about reputation, representation of the public that we represent. The third part I had a conversation was, and it was brought up today and mentioned different times, was the LYNs. And we know Gray County is, is, is rolled up into three separate LYNs. We have the Simcoe-Muskoka LIN and also it's the Wellington, what word, no.
Waterloo.
Waterloo, Wellington LIN. And so it's pretty hard to get the solid numbers when you're dealing with three LYNs for the county of Gray. And they're quite aware that that needs to change. And there has been discussion at the ministry, and that was the third part that needs to be discussed further with the ministry in the sense of relining those LYNs to get the true numbers that, that need to come back for us as Gray County to move forward from that. So I guess in summary, Mr. Chair to you and, or Mr. Warden to you is, let's make that application for Gray County. Let's look to the future. I mean, we're going through a planning process right now for our official plan, and we're looking for 20 years out. Not 10 years out, five years out, but 20 years out. Why would that not be the same for the strategy for long-term care? So let's, let's look beyond today. Let's look beyond the people that's going to replace us here in this horseshoe and others. But let's work toward getting an application and having real dialogue with the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care to look at the real solutions that we need to put forward for the county of Gray. Thank you.
Counselor McQueen, if I could, did you, did you get a sense from your discussions with the ministry that, that there was a program and announce, announcement pending with regard to the release of new beds or new funding?
Let me tell you this, there's an election coming. And what I will say is, very succinctly, he said, "Right now, we're not issuing new long-term care beds, but it's going to hit the wall." The government is quite, are very, realizing that there's a huge issue out there. When I hear that somebody says, who is very close to the ministry, says, "Get an application in, make a case for why you need more long-term care beds." From what I gathered and that, it's just a matter of time that they know they need to. I mean, when, when, when your population is more, is higher at 65-plus than under 15, the writing is on the wall. And they know that. And that's what he communicated to me also.
If I could, though, it would be the normal practice that if there was going to be a funding announcement, there would need to have been probably some consultation and some development of program parameters. Certainly, we, I think we have indicated our, our interest and, and through yourselves, through staff, have signaled to the province the challenges that Gray County is facing. It seems, though, that in the absence of any of that policy work or signals that program announcements are, are more imminent, that it, it could be some time before there was even a mechanism for them to make a decision like that. It doesn't, it doesn't seem likely to me that they would be able to make a, a decision in a very timely manner on a very specific ask from, from Gray County. When we know that the demand is so broad across the entire province, you think that they would want to handle that on a province-wide basis?
Well, certainly, certainly a lot, a lot of discussion goes on behind closed, closed scenes. I can't speak to it as myself as an AMO representative and on the MOU, all that discussion I can't talk about because of the MOU relationship between AMO and the province of Ontario. But what I'm speaking to was from a conversation that I had with the policy, senior policy advisor to the Eric Hoskins, the Minister of Eric Hoskins. And if he's a policy advisor to the minister and he's telling me, "Get an application in", I don't know. That tells me that's something that maybe we should do. Is it something that, that I understand, Madam CEO, that you would think they would make an announcement? And maybe they will be.
I, I, I think perhaps what I was trying to signal is that there is not currently an application process for us to participate in. We could write a letter, we could, we could ask for some consideration, but there has been no formal program announcement. I just wouldn't want anyone to think that we had like missed an, an opportunity that had been clearly communicated out in, in a public way because that, I'm not aware of...
Let me quote his words. He said, "Put an application in for redevelopment. The ministry is flexible." More, and also include, if you, if it's your desire, more beds. That was his, his words, as I copied from the discussion yesterday. And he talked about this application. And I don't understand why, if there is no application process, why he talked about it more than once? Why he talked about getting an application in? And, and... I, I'm not making this stuff up. I can follow up from, from, from his assistant, Ian Chesney is his name again. But I am trying to work with the ministry, which I feel is an opportunity to set up a meeting and have further discussion with yourself, Mr. Warden, yourself, Mrs., Madam CEO, and others. When I taught, when I stopped Mr. Hoskins in the hall, I said, "I remember you at the Community Hub Summit where you said, 'Have you got an issue? Come to you.'" And then right, right away, he took me around the corner of the hall and he had a conversation with me. And he said, "His advisor will be back to me by the end of the day," and he was. So all I'm saying is, is there's, I think there's an opportunity here to follow up with this, is myself, I'm quite prepared to, to work with and try to make, whatever I can as far as my, my relationship there. And certainly look at, as he said, get an application in.
Okay. Now that you've explained what that application is, I did do that application in 2005, I believe it was June, completed in June. On that, it said, "What are the limiting factors?" And this is going back a couple of years in my memory. "What is holding you back or what's going to make you move ahead?" It was around number of beds. It's around location and it's around secure funding, I believe, were the things that I identified on that application. And identified that Gray County needs to make a decision on these things. Until there's better clarity, you know, we need to start working. So that application was filled out, that was completed.
So that was 12 years ago?
Two, or 15, sorry. 2015, two years ago.
Two years ago. Thanks for that clarity. I, I will give you another, another scenario. As you know, with the situation in Markdale with regards to the new school, there was an application from the Blue Water School Board a few years back also. We're reapplying, the, the, the Blue Water School Board is reapplying that for a new school bill. And when the minister came out, Minister Hunter came to talk to us, one of her key words is, "Get an application in so it can get processed." Rural Ontario has been under a huge, huge, what's the word? Not been on the, on the radar. And I feel right now Rural Ontario is on the radar. And this current government, I think, is looking at Rural Ontario and why not get an application in now? We have nothing to lose. Let's get one in there. And you never know what might come out.
Counselor Echols?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to Counselor McQueen. 2004, I became very active and very involved with OAPSB, Ontario Association of Police Services Board, on the provincial board, similar to yourself being on the AMO board. I sit right now as first vice president of that board. But in 2004, there was a policy advisor, along with the Minister of Correctional Safety, or Correctional Services and Community Safety, said that the Police Services Act was going to be opened up and be reviewed. It's 2017. We've gone through nine different ministers. And I could be mistaken on that, it could be 12. We've had four in the last year. And the Police Services Act is still not opened up. If we're going to wait and keep delaying this decision, I'm going to be long gone into a cemetery before we have a chance to review what we're going to do with long-term care homes and how we're going to redevelop them. So just talking to a policy advisor and from his point of view and from my experiences with policy advisors in the ministry, they change quickly, probably more quickly than some of us change our underwear. With that, I'll leave it at that. On putting all of our factors that a policy advisor said, "Put in an application and the world is going to become very sunny for us." I've got no faith in that at all.
Just before I go to Counselor McQueen, I just want to remind council, the motion on the floor is to receive the report. So keep, please keep your questions to the report. Obviously, there'll be other time for the other discussion on the other motion. Counselor McQueen?
Yeah, thank you, Warden Barfoot. I just have a, a couple, and I will try to keep it to this report because we do have the other one. I think in about slide three of, of the presentation, I think there was a, a comment that additional analysis of moving to 100 beds, to moving 100 beds to Markdale from Rockwood was not completed due, and I think that there was a, another comment, because the SENA report had already dealt with that. I believe that, if I'm correct, this report that we had up there with, for the financial part of it, only dealt with the recon, or a construction site in Durham of 100 or 106 beds. I had to keep going back and forth between that presentation and the SENA report to try to figure out where the financial part of it ended up being, because I mean, this is a huge part of the, the decision. And I think that in itself is problematic, to be quite honest, because there's, I don't ground this half of the horseshoe, I only see two people with that SENA report out. And I don't know what, I won't comment on whether everybody is, is aware of those financial numbers in that report or not. That's problematic is when we put it up on the screen here, especially for the public to look at, and it's just a piece of it, you know? And we're going to go back to that one other slide when we get done with this, is, is this needs to be, the three sites need to be looked at and, and analyzed, and the analysis done, and compare apples to apples. Because I do believe too, in, in the SENA report, that the Gray Gables facility, as it sits today, has kitchen facilities and laundry facilities that are already constructed for the addition of that wing. So that has to be factored in. And I think that we need to have the total package of all of the financial ramifications of all of it. Because if that in fact is the case, then Gray Gables likely has, is financially, just as strictly a financial part, is likely a cost-saving right there. The other thing I did is I took the 160, or the 66 beds that we have in Gray Gables right now, confirm, conform to the new legislation. Am I correct? Well, if you take the $230,000 and multiply that by the 66 beds, that figures $15 million. So if we get any less than that for Gray Gables, if that was our, if that was our decision, then we would actually be giving it away. And I, I really find that we need, we need to take a look at this as to what we already have, because I think if we went around this horseshoe and asked every one of us, "What do you think about Kathleen's plan to sell Ontario Hydro?", everybody would, around here would say, "Oh, well, that's a bad idea." This is, this proposal coming up next is exactly the same as that. We're selling off an asset that we've got paid for, it's already to code, and I just believe that in that particular part of it, and I know we're going on to the next one, but I just think that we haven't got a really good picture on this financial projection because it has only looked at those two options and has never really considered the Gray Gables option. Thank you.
Counselor McQueen, I, I just would say, it's unfortunate that you were not able to remain at the last meeting where we had some further, sorry? Okay. At the last meeting, we had some further discussion on an in-camera basis, that the direction coming out of that was that for today's purposes, they wanted to, we were told that we should look specifically at the two scenarios involving Durham. So that, that particular piece did come from some of those in-camera discussions. The other part of this is, as noted on this slide, the 22-bed resident home area, in order for us to have an apples-to-apples comparison, we would need to look at the kind of renovations that would be required at Gray Gables in order to get to 32-bed resident home areas. And that work, I think, A, might be extensive, but B, we didn't want to try and guess, to put a value on what that construction is. So that is, that is a missing piece that we can't simply provide to you just today.
Counselor McQueen?
Well, I guess my comment to that would be that we're only guessing as what we can get for Gray Gables too. Because if, if those 66 beds are 230,000, that's $15 million, any amount less than that, Gray County's in the hole.
If I could, I think that as staff, we were trying to provide a long-term perspective on, on this. Certainly, if you look at any decision at a single point in time, you are, you know, you'll have numbers in front of you when, I think, when you look at how this plays out over the fullness of time. And taking into account some of the things that are a little bit more difficult to quantify with regard to the administration, management, and quality of care questions that we're trying to carefully examine and grapple with is where you get into some additional things. But your point is well taken.
Counselor Halliday?
Thank you, Mr. Warden and, and my fellow counselors. I thank John for bringing up something there that we, we ultimately need to discuss. And that is the cost of, of adding 66 beds into Durham. And I want to thank staff for finally giving us some numbers in this report because they said that 166 beds and less the reserve and, and sale proceeds, they've come up with a number which is $9,300,000. So we, we now have a number that we can work with. And then for 100 beds on, on, on the site down in Durham, they came up with a reserve of $2,800,000. So there is a, there is a, if you subtract, you have about $6,500,000 there that, that you've come up with, maybe that you could receive for, for Gray Gables if you, if you sold it to a, a private developer. But the other numbers, now that I have some numbers, and it's always good to work with numbers that staff have provided, and, you know, we, we're fortunate that the province is, is going to be able to give us some, some, some funding, you know, to, to redevelop Rockwood. And it's, it's 630... and it's, it's $635,000 a year over 25 years. And that's, that's a substantial amount of money. That's 15 million, over $15 million. So I just looked at, taking all these numbers, and I said, "Well, if, what are this, actually the 66 beds going to add to capital costs for the municipality to look at, at putting them down in Durham?" That number wasn't there, but the numbers are there that I can, I can do the math. And the math is, it's going to cost us $8,680,000 to add 66 beds. You can do a lot of manipulating cash flows and, you know, but the hard number is over $8,680,000. That's what it's going to cost us to move to 66 beds. I'm not, I'm not saying that that's right or wrong. I'm just saying that it's a fact. Now, the CEO did allude to that there was a discussion at the last council meeting about doing a costing, and our staff say, "Well, Siena already did that costing." And I always, I've been pushing and have basically been saying is, "You've got to look at the total cost." For staff to move and disregard the Siena report absolutely made no sense to me. What I want you to go back even further is back when, in January 2016, when we first heard at Social Services that this was, that the Siena report was, you know, disclosed to Social Services. I came back and I talked to Mayor McQueen and our CEO at the time, and I said, "Well", I said, "This could be, this could be a windfall for, for Gray Gables, putting 100 beds there." But I said, "That doesn't make sense. We have neighbors surrounding us. We're entering into a joint building relationship with West Gray, Chatsworth, and South, and Southgate. You know, we're partners, and so why would we want to do something?" So right from the get-go, we've always advised West Gray that we wanted to keep the 66 beds at Gray Gables and the 100 beds, and rebuild them in, in Rockwood. So that is what the status quo. Now, the other thing that I would just want to say is that the, the policy adviser did state that you have a really good case to get more long-term care beds for, for Gray Gables, because he said, "Looking at the efficiencies of putting senior staff, senior staff can look at, look after 96 beds." So he said, "You really got a good case, since you're into redevelopment, to put another 30 beds onto Gray Gables." And he said, "It makes sense." And he said, "I think you would have a good, good case." And he said, "I think the reason that you should make this application is, if there's, if there's a lineup for new beds," he said, "by putting that in sooner than later, put it in your 100-bed redevelopment, ask for another 30 beds for Gray, Gray Gables." He said, "You're in a good position to, if, if there's a lineup, to be head of the lineup." So he said, and he said, "It makes sense for your redevelopment to add another 30 beds to, to Gray Gables." The cost to add 30 beds to Gray Gables would be $6,900,000. And that we're already wanting to, you know, spend over $8,600,000 on, you know, putting them down there. So, I mean, we could fund the 30 beds the same way we're going to fund potentially the $8 million overspend. So I think, really, we have to think this out really seriously. And Gray Hounds has, has always said, "Rebuild 100 new beds in, in, in Rockwood and stay with Gray Gables." We think it makes sense. It doesn't blow off your asset, which is a major asset for our, for our county. So I can go on forever, but that's basically where, where I stand, is there is a major cost of 66 beds down there.[851.82][851.82](APPLAUSE).
Okay. I'll just remind county counsel that, before I go to Counselor Mackey, that, you know, we're receiving the information from this report here. Obviously, there's another report to come up after this. So Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I'll try and direct my question to Mr. Wepler in regards to the financials. So the status quo, Kevin, can you just go over, because it's more than down to dollars and cents here. We know from an equitable standpoint, you know, keeping three is the best way to go, but from dollars and cents, how much is it going to add to the levy to stay status quo?
Status quo of building the 100 beds is, is, is on that right-hand column there. So the status quo, you'd see year one, you know, we're going to get $635,000 in subsidy. Net operating income, we'd have some, some preferred accommodation revenue of $173,000. You would need to borrow to fund that, about $1.2 million in borrowing the debt. So an adjusted impact would be $417,000 increased to the levy, but you have $1.3 million in reserves, or going to reserves now, built into your tax, into your budget. So if you remove that, then to pay that, you actually could reduce the levy in 2020, whenever you build this. Just based on being prudent of putting that money away, that $1.3 million is, is a source of funding. Why that, that source of funding is there is when Lee Manor was built, there was no ministry money. The County of Gray did it all on its own, that redevelopment, and that's what caused, there was two debentures taken out, one in 2005 and one in 2007. And that's what makes up that $1,361,000 that's been sitting in your budget now since 2005, or '07, when it was, when the second debenture was taken. So, okay?
So there's this. Kevin, what's that work out to person in the county?
Oh, person, oh, approximately.
My sense, it's a few cents per day.
I think there's $92,000 is our population, so.
So, I mean, I guess it would be about 20 cents per week, per person, is what it's going to cost. So, you know, that's what we have to decide. You know, do we value long-term care enough to spend 20 cents per week, per person?[1018.82][1018.82](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm not sure which one is closer.
They're all live. They're all live, just speak close.
So there has been a lot said, and I'm not going to repeat. I do appreciate all the information that we've had, and it's certainly been a comment that we received a great deal of information. But I also would agree that a lot of the information has been successive, so questions have been asked, answers provided, in some instances, raised more questions. And I think it's really important that we do make an informed decision. To that point, I want to share with the group that I took the opportunity to attend the most recent Southwest LIN board meeting. And at that meeting, I not only had the opportunity to familiarize myself with the board members, I did have a brief discussion with the board chair. And the board chair assured me that not only are they aware of our circumstance and, and certainly the, the concern from our community, but that furthermore, they are highly motivated themselves to make informed decisions. And they want to make sure that the decisions that we all come to collectively are in the best interest of the community, locally, with input. So I found that very encouraging. I also learned at that meeting for the first time, the huge impact that volunteers have. And I do thank you, Lynn, for, for providing the numbers. So 9,000 volunteer hours per year. That is huge. And I think we have to factor that into the cost of change. Moving on from that, I guess I just want to clarify a point that you made earlier, Lynn, and that is with regard to responsive behaviors. Do our three long-term care homes currently offer services that address responsive behaviors?
All three homes have staff that are funded specifically for responsive behaviors. It's based on a per-resident-day basis, so the more residents you have, the more hours you have. It does not fully meet the needs of the residents in the home, and there has been information in the past about the LIN wanting to open a behavioral support unit at Lee Manor. They were approved for that, and it's kind of got delayed while I've been working on this.
Well, thank you very much for the clarity on that. And the reason that I ask that is because I've been looking for a lot of wisdom elsewhere. So as an example, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities has a paper on this topic. The Long-Term Care Association for Ontario has a few thoughts on the topic. And in reviewing some of this information, I came to understand that there are facilities that offer specifically on their service selector, if you will, you know, dementia-related services. And I didn't see those listed for our facilities. So I think that, obviously, the financial aspect of this is important, but my concern is that we are accountable for the care and the quality of care. And I'm concerned that we're having a discussion about a change that might be, might be, to address problems that we should already be addressing.[1241.08][1241.08](APPLAUSE). And I say that with no disrespect to anybody, but if, if, if the acuity is changing and the needs are changing and we're not keeping up, the writing's on the wall. So in this decision-making process, I would like to see not just, you know, the financials really on a cocktail napkin. Boil it down. I think Scott made a very good point, and I certainly don't want to address the financials any further. But our facilities have family councils, residential councils. I'm not really sure what the message is coming from those, and I want to know, because we are accountable. And I'm just going to review my notes here, because I'm trying to be as concise as possible. Yeah, so Federation of Canadian Municipalities, they're talking about senior advisory committees and so forth. I think that we've established that there's public interest in this topic, and regardless of where we go from here, I would recommend that we establish such a senior advisory council, because the issue's not going away. So I do thank staff for their information, and I'm looking forward to continuing this conversation well beyond the decision to go left or right. Thank you.[1331.51][1331.51](APPLAUSE).
Lynn, do you want to comment to that before we go to counsel?
Yes, could I just comment on responsive behaviors? That is not in my report. However, there has been extensive information shared through social services. Counsel receives all that information over the years. I've talked about the acuity incidents. Our staff work tirelessly, providing care to a resident population that has high responsive behaviors. The ministry has funded us additional funding. Core education programs focus on how to manage responsive behaviors. We are doing it. The problem is, there's core group of responsive behaviors we can't manage. That's requiring us to call 911, have the police come in and remove the person. There's certain interventions we cannot manage with existing staffing levels. It would be really important in whatever our new building design is, that we take into account and make sure there's quiet places, lots of quiet places, that are in full view of where staff are, so they can look and see and know what's going on. Because one of the critical incidents we have to report is abuse. That can be resident to resident, resident to visitor, resident to staff, staff to resident, visitor to resident. It's so complex, and it is something that's very high on our radar, and we are working diligently. And the Southwest LIN and the ministry have dedicated additional funds to try and support the development of specialized responsive behavior units, to decrease people transferring to hospital, or to be able to stabilize people so they are suited to long-term care. But we're talking a different kind of care, that's highly specialized responsive behaviors. And that's where I'm seeing the ministry is putting money now into specialized service, because it's really tough to care for someone with an advanced dementia and somebody with, that's frail elderly with an acute medical condition within that same home area or that same environment. So it is tough, and we definitely are dealing with it.
Do you have a follow-up from that, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I thank you very much for that, Lynn, and I certainly appreciate the challenges, although I can't speak firsthand. Great deal of respect for the people who work in this business. I, I agree that it certainly should be a priority. And part of the reason that I bring it up is because I want to make sure that I understand the challenges, and that we collectively here understand the challenges so we can make the right decisions to address the quality of care. That's the bottom line. And part of my concern is that there are some aspects of this topic that really didn't float to the surface until we started talking about redevelopment. So it's on my radar now, and I think that it's very good that we have a better understanding. And I just want to add one last point. In my research, it, it was noted that if anybody has a concern about a long-term care home, that they should contact the ministry. And in the category of urgent concerns, it was noted that you have to call them between 8:30 and 7:00. And I'm thinking, "That's odd." So I just mention that because, again, the process of making sure that we, as the individuals accountable, understand how our processes can improve, and also how they can improve within other levels of government. So, good information. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Counselor McQueen?
Thank you. I guess that I have, have a comment to Counselor Mackey's comment about the 40 cents per person. That would be fine if we were charging by person. Unfortunately, long-term care is put on the municipal levy. And so I went back into the May 11th Committee of the Whole Package, and on page 85 of 121, it gives the breakdown of what the increased costs of long-term care from 2007 to 2017 have been, and what the projections from 2017 to 2027 are. And if you take a look at that line and go over to the projected, from now till 2027, that number is projected for the Town of Blue Mountains to continue with the status quo of long-term care to be $960,000 in increased costs. If you figure that out by, by percentage on your taxes, that's going to be about an eight-and-a-half percent tax hit to the Town of the Blue Mountains over the next 10 years for that one particular item on the Gray County budget. And I think that that's something that I think we should all refer back to that page, especially when I hear a thought of adding another 30 beds. That number will not remain at that. In fact, it'll likely go way over that. So, you know, sometimes you have to be careful of what you ask for. That's my comment to that. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor McQueen, this is still two comments on their report, correct? Okay.
The other thing is, as regards to your reserve, I guess this is to Kevin, that so since Lee Manor was, was paid off, that debenture, you've been putting money into your reserve, right? And that dedicated reserve was for future redevelopment?
Long-term care redevelopment.
Which would be probably considered as Lee Manor, or, I mean, Rockwood care.
Well, it was, it was the, it was the facility that we knew that had, was going to be required to be redeveloped by the ministry. So, yeah, initially, we called it Rockwood Redevelopment, yes. So the 2006, 2016, and 2014, when the first debenture fell off, we started moving money in the, in the second one.
So it's council, already carrying forward that redevelopment?
That's right. They, you've approved that in your budget, yeah?
Just one other comment in the sense that, uh, we see gradually, uh, insurance services, there were two services that I got, they turned into insurance, so you may see something in the comments. But I want to make a comment in the sense, sort of, the last over versus the last, in the sense, uh, the community at Markdale rallied and raised over $200,000 to build the hospital in 2002, 2003. Similar to the same time we talked about reviewing maybe the Police Service Act. Well, this, some of the people around this horseshoe went down to AMO for the delegation of Minister Health, the current Minister of Health, and made the plea for that hospital rebuilt. And that was the summer of 2014. He said he would let us know before the lease file. And in September of 2014, he announced a new hospital in Markville. And part of that, I think it was much earlier on in the presentations we published, was, was they knew that the long-term care building was there, along with the developing and one of the top CHC operations in the province also. Sort of like the three-legged stool, you have, in Markville, you have the CHC, you have the hospital, and you have the long-term care bed. the hospital, and you have the long-term care bed. So I guess my point is, is the current minister, is that minister who did announce that hospital, again, who is very succinct, and I feel from meeting that man and talking to that man, he is very genuine to his cause of health, not maybe, I don't know, the Minister for Correctional Services has changed, I don't know how many times, even the past two years has changed, the minister, let alone is now the new minister, but I think it's worth that opportunity, again, to make that application to the current minister who also announced a new hospital in Markdale.
Okay, just, I think we've had a good discussion on this motion then to receive the report that has been presented here, so we're going to call the vote. All those in favor of receiving the report then before you? Opposed? That's carried. With all due respect, we've sat here for two hours going through this, I think we deserve a 10-minute break then before we go to the next motion, so unfortunately with, sorry with the crowd that we have, but we're going to have to take a 10-minute break here.
Mr. Warden? Mr. Warden, I would like permission to...